Let's take a couple of minutes, I'd like to read the letter before we start. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Welcome to beautiful Half Moon Bay in the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 13th, 2018. Turn it over to our Community Development Director.
Bridgette, go ahead and do the roll call and then we have a couple of staff introductions that we'd like to make before we get going.
Sure. Commissioner Demond, Krista Benjamin is out sick this evening, Commissioner Evans is also absent, Vice Chair Holt.
Here.
And Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
Before we get going, staff is very happy to introduce our Inner Arm City Manager, Dave Bosch is here, and we also have a new in our Community Development Department staff, Doug Garrison is here, he's our Senior Planner and comes to us with coastal zone experience and we're delighted about that. He's been on board for, what, a couple of weeks, so his desk is piling up already, so it's, we're just delighted to have this support, both from our leadership and also in our department. You will see Doug soon, I'm sure, with projects before you.
Welcome to Half Moon Bay. We look forward to your contributions. So, we have reviews, we have approval of the meeting minutes, actually, actually, yes. We have election of the Chair and Vice Chair, given that we only have three members, the protocol is typically to wait until we have a full attendance, so I'm going to request that we put this on hold for another meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. Okay, I need to find my, I'll use yours. So, let's get to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a sense of which of the minutes we can approve? If we have quorum.
I did see the Joint Park and Rec Commission meeting. Commissioner Demond wasn't present.
Yeah, the December meeting is complete.
Okay. Sure. So, I had, I did have comments on the December 12th meeting, which I submitted in writing to staff, so.
We'll incorporate those now and you'll see them as a draft at your next meeting when you can approve those, because that's, isn't that the set that we can't do tonight?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Perfect, so we'll just, we'll.
We'll postpone them and then add that to them for you.
Okay, very good. Then, can I get a motion to approve, does anybody have any comments or additions to the November 14th through November 28th meeting minutes?
I'll move, move to approve November 14th, 2017, and November 28th, 2017.
Second.
All right, we got a second, all right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along. We have public comment, so for those of you who are here and who are not speaking on an item on the agenda, this is your opportunity to share any public comment. Not seeing anybody anxious to come to the lectern, we will close public comment and move on to the first and only public hearing item tonight, which is an appeal of the Director's decision to approve a coastal development permit and architectural review of the construction of a new home at 525 Railroad. So Jill, I'm going to turn this over to you.
So, this was a Director's hearing a few weeks back. We try to schedule appeals as promptly as possible, and I do want to note, the day that the appeal was received, I took it personally and confirmed with the applicant that this date was workable for him and that he would be in town, and unfortunately, after we noticed the item, he informed us that he wouldn't be able to attend this hearing. But if that's part of the reason why he's given you additional written information, I understand he's also sent somebody to represent him tonight, and so we're proceeding, and Scott Phillips is the project planner and he has a brief presentation to walk you through this project.
Excellent, please proceed.
Thanks Jill, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. A little background on this project, it was filed back in June of 2017, and we went through a couple of rounds of incompleteness, some modifications to the project, primarily due to, you know, decreasing the prominence of the front garage and increasing the size of the porch. Eventually, it was deemed completed in October, and we scheduled the Director Hearing and noticed it for December 13th. Shortly after the holidays, we did receive a timely appeal on January 5th. Here's a site plan, some general context of the neighborhood, it's off to the, sort of the western side of the Alsace-Lorraine neighborhood. The project includes a 4,301 square foot house and two-car garage. Here's the front elevation that faces railroad, the side facing east, north elevation facing the, excuse me, yeah, the north elevation facing the neighboring property and Central Avenue beyond, south elevation facing the recently approved two-story house to the south. Landscape plan, one thing that you may notice that all the tall landscaping has been limited to the outside of the setback, the side setbacks. For, as far as the grounds for appeal, the main concern, as you probably noticed, was that the concerns with, that the two-story house would block views from the neighbors' backyards as you continue east from the subject property. Also, that the two-story house would decrease property values of the surrounding neighborhood. The predominant theme of the neighborhood is two-story, and we did prepare a inventory of the single and two-story houses within the vicinity, and also note that the city does not have any adopted policy ordinance or design guideline that necessarily protects private views. We do have some provisions to protect public views from certain places within the city known as, referred to as visual resource areas. In conclusion, the proposed, the approved residence is consistent with the neighborhood and would be appropriate for the site and conforms to all the applicable zoning regulations, design guidelines, and the local coastal land use plan. As mentioned in the staff report, our recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the Director's decision approving the two-story house at 525 Railroad Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions or any comments or concerns.
Brian?
Can you just tell me a little bit more and give me a little bit of background and perhaps what was approved for the adjacent lot, the vacant lot to the south?
Yes, it was a slightly, slightly different design, but a, in smaller two-story house that's, you know, the lot to the, to the south is slightly smaller, so the idea was to reflect that smaller lot size. It did have some, you know, some contrasting, yeah, so if you look up here, it's, so the house, or the lot directly south of the green box there is where the two-story house was approved, actually on the same agenda as this, as this project, so.
Les?
Yeah, I did go by the property and it appears that there are two lots, so just to kind of make sure that I understand, so there are two plans right now, one for the lot to the south that has been approved, and this lot that's subject right now that is on appeal, right? So, in terms of other homes, A, the one that's been approved, and other ones, say, up and down railroad, can you give me some background on, on size, I mean, this lot doesn't look too much larger than several of the lots south of there, home size, are we talking about anything significantly different than some of the other homes? I also biked down there today and looking further north, even though railroad ends, there are several new houses, maybe two or three blocks north, that seem to be fairly large, too, so can you give me any insights into other homes that either are being constructed size-wise, whether these are two stories or one story?
Yes, so do you note that this, the home that was proposed, that was approved by the Director did not exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio of .5, and it is within the realm of, one house in particular that is under construction currently, that's, this house would be smaller than, than the house that's under construction at the end of Correia's right now, so.
Thank you.
So there are larger homes and smaller homes within the vicinity, so.
When this project came before the Community Development Director, there weren't any variances requested, were there?
No, no variances or exceptions requested.
And to your, and to your knowledge, there were no changes recently to the zoning on this property, were there?
No, none whatsoever.
Is there, I read the staff reports, thank you, they were very helpful, very clear. There's no, as you indicated, there's nothing in the city code that protects private views. Is there, in your opinion, I didn't see anything in the staff report to the contrary, is there anything else that we should consider when we look at this project that, you know, I don't see anything in the letter, or in the staff report, or in the appeal, that seems like material grounds for us to, to vote in favor of an appeal? So I'm curious if there's anything else that we should be considering here as we think through this process.
What we'd probably recommend is to, to take public comment to see if there are any concerns, and then, but from staff, no.
Recently, we, we put together residential guidelines as a planning commission. Is this project in conformance with the residential guidelines that the planning commission approved?
Yes, it's staff's opinion that the, the project as approved is in substantial conformance with the design guidelines.
And architecturally speaking, in addition to most of the homes being two-story, is there anything about this project that makes it not fitting with the neighborhood from a design perspective?
No, there are certainly examples within the vicinity of similar style and mass bulk, and as I mentioned, it's staff's opinion that this, this project is in substantial conformance with the design guidelines. I meant to hand this out earlier, actually, this is a color and materials sample.
Thank you, I have no other questions. I'm gonna.
Through the, through the chair, just the items that the appellant brought up as being issues for appeal, can you think of any in recent years that those arguments would have been applicable and that the Planning Commission did grant an appeal for?
So, I've been, I've been working here at the city for four and a half years now, and I have not seen an appeal of this nature since.
Okay, so there's no precedent?
And I haven't seen anything in, in public record.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to open it up for public comment, and if the person speaking on behalf of the appellant would like to speak first, we're happy to open it up to you. Yes, please go to the, to the lectern, and you need to make sure the green button is on and we can hear your voice through the microphone.
So, first of all, I would like to again express Mr. White's apologies at being unable to appear here tonight. He's a federal government employee in the first government shutdown, really threw a wrench in the schedule for this, and unfortunately, he couldn't turn it down, but he would like to make sure that everyone is aware that he'd be more than happy to meet with any, any of you upon his return on Friday. The grounds for the relief being sought are pretty straightforward. The neighborhood is very diverse and unique, the houses come in all different colors, shapes, and sizes, facing all different directions. In the letter, he references toward the end, a home built on Kelly Avenue that is in modern style that the Commission approved, that definitely does not fit with the theme of the neighborhood, and it was approved on the grounds that it would enrich the, the theme of the neighborhood and just to give it, give it some diversity, and on those same grounds, Mr. White would like to point out that a single-story house being built on a property at 525 Railroad would continue to enrich the neighborhood and diversify the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and.
Ma'am, could you, for the record, could you state your name? You don't have to state your address if you don't want to, but people often do, if you could just tell us which city you live in, if you prefer.
Debeverati.
What's that?
Debeverati.
Thank you. I don't have any other public comment cards. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, you're welcome to go up to the lectern and provide your comments. Not seeing anybody so inclined, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. So, I think it's an interesting, an interesting position to bring diversity of housing into the discussion. I'm not sure if we have any grounds to enforce our opinions of diversity on a property owner when they're conforming with, you know, the residential guidelines, the general direction we've provided, and they're not asking for any variances on the project. It seems like, in fact, we might be imposing a fairly harsh economic burden on somebody who entered into a project, so I would have concerns about, about that if we tried to follow through with this appeal. Also, yeah, I don't know, Brian, Les?
Well, I'd agree, and, and I've driven by a couple times, taken a look, and I recognize there are a smattering of single-family homes, or no, single-story homes around in the neighborhood, but none of them are fronting on railroad, so the, the character sort of fronting on railroad, looking at that way, is, is two-story homes and inconsistent with this design. The one question I'd ask of staff is, I notice on the side setback, on the southern side, I think there's currently a 12-foot setback on that side where the minimum required is five-foot. Was there any exploration of, you know, siding that home closer over and if there would be any ability to maintain some of that view corridor, having done that?
Yeah, if I could elaborate on this, there was a fairly extensive discussion with, between staff and the applicant on, on this, this particular concern, and we arrived on the footprint that you see in the plans this evening. It was more of a balancing act of our daylight plane requirement that you, you can sort of see coming through here on this side. Now, this corner of the gable is allowed to encroach, but only 15 horizontal feet. The applicant also had an interest in maintaining as much room on this side as possible to, to help the, the neighbor's concerns in the back, so that it was, it was more of a balancing act between those two concerns, so.
I noticed in the staff report, there was also feedback provided by several of the neighbors regarding the landscaping. Can you walk me through that?
Yes, absolutely. So, so when, when this application was originally submitted, we encouraged the applicant to reach out to the neighbors, which, from what I understand, they did, and there was, there was some substantial discussion with the adjacent neighbors in particular on the landscaping. The applicant agreed to decrease the, the height of all landscaping in the backyard, because that was the primary concern with the, the adjacent neighbors, so, and they, what, from what was explained to me, they came to a mutual agreement that the landscaping within the setbacks would, would remain low, low-lying, so, so this area here and here, so.
And was that, was that included as a condition of approval in the project?
We did add a condition of approval at the Director Hearing, and, and I can point, I can, I can point you to that, within Attachment Three, the resolution for the Director Hearing, it's Condition B to B, which, which reads, "All landscaping elements greater than eight feet in height shall be no closer than 14 feet to the north side property line and 12 feet to the south side property line."
So, for this, for the approval of the project, the landscaping, when the owner gets their certificate of occupancy, has to be in conformance with what's here, but in the future, if the landscape grows up and violates this agreement, there's nothing here that restricts the, the owner from planting a bunch of, you know, trees in the future, is there, or adding additional landscaping that would block the view in the future?
Yes, that's correct, so.
Would we be given the issue that's been raised about the view, the private view corridor and the private agreement and the expectation that may be, may have been raised by some of the neighbors who've entered in a private agreement, could we put a deed restriction on the property regarding the landscaping in the private corridor, or ask them to record it?
Yeah, I think I'd like to defer to our legal staff on this one.
Chair Hernandez, if I may, I would point your attention to the, of Condition of Approval E5, which states that the permit runs with the land and the approvals and conditions run with the land and would be binding on future landowners, so I think in this instance, a deed restriction is not necessary to enforce that condition in the future.
So, for the public record, the project runs with the land, and any future owner would be required to comply with this agreement to keep the landscaping below a certain height?
That's right.
And have we documented what that height is?
I think we should beef up the condition if that's the intention, so I, to be real clear, that not only does it say it's running with the land at the end of that document, but right with that condition and then include the height. The intent for the height and for the, the setbacks of the landscaping is that the, the taller landscaping elements would be clustered and adjacent to the house, so as to not add to the height or the bulk of, of what's developed on the property. So, anything that's in the setback, I think we were looking at fence height, so around seven feet.
I'd like to bring it back to the, my fellow commissioners for discussion, get your thoughts. So, my, my view on this is the neighbors have an understanding that there's going to be some kind of restriction in place, and if, you know, I don't think there's a lot we can do to reduce the size of the house or to make it a one-story property, but I do think we could beef up the conditions to enforce the expectation that the landscaping won't block people's views. Interested in your thoughts on that.
Just again, ask the question of staff from a precedent standpoint, have we done something similar in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
We have the project on Jenna Lane, yeah, I think we, we added some conditions on Jenna Lane in a similar manner.
Yeah, there was a neighbor agreement, and of course, that one has some challenges with how that ended up being documented, which I, I would be very comfortable improving the language here based on the hearing that we had. You know, the neighbors came to the hearing, we had a good discussion about it, and staff did our, we did our best to document what was agreed upon, but in terms of longevity of the intention, I think it would be helpful to, to add a little bit more language, and I don't think it's out of the norm of design guidelines and compatibility and what's going on with landscaping in the other yards, because they're, they're also trying to keep their, their corridors open a little bit, too, as well.
Okay, I'm certainly then in agreement that by, if we can beef those up, I think it'll help the requests from the appellant and perhaps also get. up, uh, I think it'll help the, uh, requests from the appellant and perhaps also get after some of the other comments that the neighbors made, and, uh, but, uh, I do agree with my fellow commissioners that otherwise really isn't any grounds for, to, to appeal this, given that it meets all the criteria and, uh, standards that, uh, are set for building in this zone, so. So, my, uh, recommendation would be to add those conditions and, uh, then go ahead.
I've got nothing further to add. I'd be in support of that as well. Okay, um, I would agree. I think we're unanimous on that, so we'd like to make sure we protect the agreed-upon corridor. I think the seven-foot height is what you called out, Jill. I, I think, uh, that's fine. It allows for a reasonable amount of privacy. So, um, can I get a motion? Or do you need to do anything else in terms of, is there anything else you need on this, Scott? So, how would we, uh, given that we've amended the language here, so we have the recommendation to deny the appeal, but we also want to add an additional condition to the project? Is that what we're gonna do? Okay.
Amend condition B to B to limit the height to seven, live in, limit the height of the landscaping to seven feet within the setback areas.
Can I get a motion?
So, I, uh, move that we adopt, uh, P dash, whatever, 18, denying the appeal and upholding the director's decision approving PD P dash 17 dash 040, an application for coastal development permit, architectural review to allow the construction of a new 43 01 square foot, single-family residence on a 9,000 030 square foot site, 525 Road Avenue, based upon the findings and evidence contained in Exhibit A of the draft, resolution, subject to conditions, approval, Exhibit B with the, uh, uh, addition of the seven-foot height restriction for the, uh, for the, uh, what are we?
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
For the landscaping in the setback area.
Second. Can I get a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Demone?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes, 3-0.
On behalf of the appellant, I will say it's a bummer to have your view obstructed, but there's not a lot we can do here. All right, so I'm gonna close that item?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to, um, just, uh, for the record, uh, state the, uh, the appeal period, that the planning commission's decision can get appealed to the city council.
Please.
Which will begin tomorrow morning at 8:30 and run for 10 working days, so.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're gonna close that item, and we're gonna move to the director's report? You're welcome.
There's nothing like a director's report to clear the room, so, I'll let that happen.
Let me talk about postage.
Yeah, okay, so, we would love to have had another item tonight, um, but we're just, uh, trying to get these pulled together. So, that said, and we haven't seen you for a little while, and I'm gonna run through some of the things that, uh, we're working on that are coming to the planning commission as well as through the, um, director hearing process. So, at your next meeting, we are, uh, hoping to serve up a study session for 555 Poplar. This is a duplex that you saw sometime back now and actually, um, denied the project, and the applicant has been working hard on alternate site plans. Um, staff has been, um, sitting at the table with him, and, uh, a lot of, uh, flimsy paper and Sharpie pens, and so he's got a couple pretty well-developed designs that he would like to, um, run by you before he, um, turns the screws any tighter on these plans. So, I think it'll be an informative session, it'll be interesting to see how, um, tight the sites and, and various massing techniques really, um, can make quite a bit of a difference, and we're really curious to see the planning commission's feedback for that. Um, also, at your next session, um, we'll be bringing the, um, State Housing and Community Development, um, report for, for the housing element, uh, status. That's where we're, we're going to have the, uh, report out on the number of units from the previous year, as well as, um, progress on implementing policies, and we will try to roll in the public works capacity piece, which, um, I didn't do last year, so we will do that this year. Um, so we'll have that brief report at your next meeting. For March 13th, um, can't say for sure, we're very, very close to having Pullman ready to come back to you. That's the one that was continued, and, um, uh, staff has done the research that they need to do, it's been compiled, it's, um, it was a really good direction from the commission, because in fact, I'm gonna use, um, this compilation for the, um, local coastal programs, uh, bio report, it's, it's the best summary of information that we have in the area. Um, but we're, we're needing to work on the gridding and drainage plan, is my understanding, which was also something that you requested, and it's, uh, the first draft isn't ready for you. Um, we are also working on getting the Zabala House to you, that is a conversion of six, um, lodging, um, units into small apartments, and there's a couple, couple items we have to work through. Uh, I've been working on the Hyatt Place, um, which is a proposal for the hotel, uh, it's on the order of 140 rooms for the, the corner down at South Main Street and Highway One, and, uh, the applicant has done a pretty significant revision to his plans since you sought, um, for a, uh, design study session. Um, when you see it, again, we're hoping to do two things. We'd like to, um, hold the NOP study session, that's the notice of preparation for the SEQA document, um, take public comment on, um, what kinds of things they want to make sure the city studies as part of the environmental review, in addition to the planning commission's direction for that. I think I've mentioned to you before that, um, this is kind of a new thing for the planning commission, um, this is my practice. A lot of other folks in my chair just do these during the day, and it's, uh, I, I like the planning commission to see the scoping session and to give input on it, so it's just a, a matter of philosophy and how you like to do it.
We appreciate it, and I think it provides a little more transparency to the process.
I do too, yeah. Good, I'm glad. Um, so let's see how it goes, and, um, your feedback will be helpful. I believe that could be ready, um, late, the second meeting of March or, or April, and that will be an important meeting. Um, also, based on city council direction at their last meeting, just, just a week ago, uh, they're interested in some work on, uh, short-term vacation rentals, and we, uh, staff are, so, we, we wanna work on the ADU ordinance, and in fact, we see synergy between the two. So, um, working with, uh, the folks, um, that Heather works with, um, and Doug's gonna be working on this as well, we, we'd like to have a study session before the planning commission, um, highlighting some recent ordinance work that was done on both of these topics in San Mateo County, um, acknowledging that the coastal commission has provided guidance on both of these topics as well, so that's really pertinent to the coastal zone. And then also, our own, the input that we have been receiving through our, um, local coastal program update process has touched on both of these items, so we actually have some public input about this, and, you know, through an indirect source, but we, we'd like to, um, present what we think the key issues are to you and get some feedback, so we can, um, pretty quickly draft these ordinances. These are ordinances that the coastal commission welcomes cities to be, um, cleaning up and bringing in. They are, um, wanting us to have our, um, ADU ordinance conform to some of the new state laws, and they, they have an interest in the vacation rentals, so that is just kicking off in our shop. Um, reflecting back on the Highway One South project, um, just so you know, Highway One North is moving along, we're, um, working on the environmental document for that, so you will see that as a coastal development permit, similarly to the Highway One South project. The North project is more complex, and it's got a bigger, um, scope in terms of its, its land area and, and, um, what it's affecting. It includes the, uh, Class One Bicycle-Badestrian Trail on, on the east side, which, um, is, is a really great feature of it, but it definitely changes the scope of, of the work that we're doing. Um, also, coming your way at a future time, but I wanted to let you know, because this has been in the newspaper, and, um, you've heard about it, the, um, application came in for the Pillar Point RV Park for their, um, really, it's an after-the-fact coastal development permit, and it also includes a new, um, public restroom on the coastal trail, and so we'll be working with the applicant to, uh, get that application to completeness, and we intend to have that be a planning commission review item because of the highly public nature of the project. Um, community development director hearings where, um, just like tonight, you could see any of these items if, if our decisions are appealed. Uh, we have an accessory dwelling unit, um, that is scheduled for, uh, approval tomorrow. Um, it's, uh, the existing home is located on Ventura Avenue. For the March 14th director hearings, um, we're queuing up three items, there's another accessory dwelling unit, this is legalization of a unit on Marimonte Street, there's an addition on Correa Street that I think is ready to go, and there's a proposed new home on Magnolia that's, um, coming together. So, um, we're really active with those items, and, um, we bump them up to you when we think it's appropriate. We didn't bump up railroad because it conformed to absolutely everything. If your feedback is that you wish you would have seen it in the first place, we, we can make that adjustment, that's, that's a call that we can make. Parks Master Plan and Bike and Ped Master Plan, we've done quite a bit of work on that since the first of the year. Uh, for the Parks Master Plan, uh, we took all your input to the best of our ability and, um, put it into a revised draft, and we saw the Parks and Rec Commission on January 24th. They recommended the plan as written with some additional changes that, um, staff had, we'd been picking up feedback from community members about, uh, Smithfield in particular and the Johnston House, and, um, just, just real sensitivities to both for different reasons, um, partially along the lines of, uh, Chair Hernandez', um, correction to our minutes as well for, for Smithfield, so we'll, we're, we're getting that in there. Um, Bike and Ped Master Plan, there's been two meetings, January 18th, there was, uh, the BPAC meeting with the first draft of the Bike-Ped Master Plan, as well as the design guidelines, and the design guidelines, I'd really encourage you to take a peek at if you can, um, we can send you the link, they're on the HMB Outdoors, um, website. The design guideline-
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll send you the link, absolutely. Um, make a note so I don't forget, somebody write it down. Okay. Um, the, what I wanted to mention about them though is, you know, that the plan itself highlights, um, bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements, and improvements that cover both modes, um, both for corridors, intersections, and then also for spot improvements, things where, um, key pieces are, are just, um, not functioning well. Obviously, Commissioner Demone can go into a lot more detail about this, as he's been serving as the planning commission rep on, on the BPAC. Um, but I wanted to note about the design guidelines, because they're in fact, um, almost more detailed and a thicker document than the plan, the intention for them is to give the city a lot of different ways to implement good things. So, for example, um, I'm gonna take the Kelly and Poplar Street examples of, um, that came out of the local coastal program update, where there was so much acknowledgement that both of those streets are really important for coastal access, and yet they're extremely different from each other, and the approach to each of them should be different. Um, so, in fact, in the design guidelines, you'll see, um, and beyond sidewalks, you're gonna see something called a side path. You'll also see green infrastructure and green streets types of facilities, where, um, thinking of Poplar and the Cypress trees that are there now, that could actually be the kind of tool and inform how we would do traffic calming and, and incorporate side paths and green infrastructure. So, just building upon the character that, um, people appreciate and that is suited to the area. So, I'm really happy to have design guidelines like this to, to support a plan. It, it's something that will, um, last longer than, um, your staff probably will, and so it gives you, it gives you, as, as residents and commissioners, a really great, great tool to use over, over time. Um, they will be long-lived, I hope. Um, and then we had a workshop February 8th, it was Thursday, we just did that. Um, it was well-attended, and we got some more community input, we're gonna finish up, uh, a final draft of that plan. Both of these plans require, uh, SEQA review at a kind of a high level, because, um, there's a lot of speculation about what, um, some of the implementation measures would be, so we're, we're queuing that up, and so you're going to see them both again, um, in a nearly final format with that SEQA coverage document, um, either before or after the, the city council has said yes, this is the plan that we, we're going to be, um, bringing forward. They can do their final adoption after the SEQA work. Where are we? Let's talk about the LCP. So, we have not slated anything for you quite yet, I do want you to know that I've been working on the development chapter, um, when I can get around to it, and I'm trying to clear my, my desk to do that. The number one thing, though, that we have done to help us, um, get moving is we've brought in two new planners, so you've, you've just met Doug tonight, and we also have a new assistant planner, and, uh, you'll meet her soon, and she happens to have worked for the coastal commission in the San Diego office, and she is already starting to work with me on the LCP, and it's the delight of my February. Um, so, we've got great news for that, getting some support. I've been, um, as you know, I've been in three different roles in a year's time, and it's not been, it's not been consistent, um, my ability to, to take this, uh, work as a priority, um, but I think, I think I, we can do that now. Now, a key piece we talked about was the biological resources evaluation. Um, I've been in contact with our consultant who has been, um, really a little bit, it's, it's been hard, it, they've been frustrated. The San Mateo County data took longer than, um, we had even anticipated it being delayed. They have it all now, they've had it for a while, and they've made, uh, significant pro, uh, progress with their mapping of hydrology and habitat mapping. They're going to be, um, submitting things to staff in the near future, and we're, we're hoping to get to some drafts, um, this spring for, for that mapping as, as really a focus of, maybe even a special meeting, so that you can really dig into it. We know how sensitive this topic is, um, we want to have enough time and attention on it and not crowd that in with, with other discussion items, and literally, I think, spending time looking at the map and making sure we didn't forget anything is, is a meeting that I'd like to have. Um, the other thing we're doing relative to the map, we're just, uh, we're getting an amendment to our local coastal program grant. We have a round three, a support grant, uh, from the coastal commission, and based on coastal commission staff's, um, agreement and recommendation, we're actually shifting the entire funding of that grant to the biological map preparation. It's, um, $85,000, the scope of work for that map is just under, just under that, and, um, they really wanted to support that, that piece of work, so it's, it's, it was really great. Um, so we're focused on spring for planning commission and summer for city council. Uh, I know there's interest in, um, how we're doing informal submittals with the coastal commission. This is, it's really a kind of an iterative process, we, we have quarterly meetings with- them, and that's been pretty standard except they've had a big staffing shift, so we're gonna pick that up again, but we also, we just communicate with them fairly regularly as these, as these topics come up, so they are obviously in the loop on the bio mapping because we're, we're working through that in the funding, we've had many discussions with them about some of the development items, and we, we intend to just keep doing that, so it isn't like a plotted schedule for the informal submittal, it's, it's a conversation. That is what I have today, I wanted to have some firmer dates on the bio work, but I wasn't able to coordinate with, with the consultant, I won't be able to talk to them probably till next week, so we'll, we'll get that for you as soon as we can. Also, so that's the LCP, I did wanna let you know a couple of things from city council, as we already mentioned that they're interested in short-term rentals, and also know they are interested in the ADU ordinance, they will have their retreat, their priority setting retreat, I think that's going to be in March, I haven't heard the date yet, but that's a really important cue for us in, in what our priorities are, I'm, I'm assuming the LCP will be one of those. A couple other things that they're working on, they had a draft smoking ordinance at their last meeting, and the, a draft cannabis ordinance is probably gonna come out within the next couple weeks for nursery starts, and that was per direction back in, was it November Heather? Yeah, I think it was November, so we're trying to support quite a few things that are going on here and there and everywhere, it's, it's quite layered, and we appreciate the feedback that you have, and we're looking forward to bringing you more pieces of the LCP.
Thank you Jill, sounds like you have a lot on your plate, my guidance to the council would be to consider serious prioritization, there's, there's, there's a lot there, so, and, and I know you've got a lot of staff, but it seems like a pretty aggressive agenda.
We appreciate that, thank you. One thing I did wanna note, a council member wondered at the last meeting if the planning commission wanted to reconsider having a subcommittee to support staff on the LCP work, I know we've talked about it a couple times, it's not on your agenda tonight, but if you would like it to be on an agenda, we could put it on your next meeting.
I'd be happy to have it as an agenda item for future meeting. So I heard we should expect a revised draft of the LCP sometime in spring, for, and then the plan would be to, assuming we keep on schedule sometime in summer, submit to council. Very good, thank you. I had a couple of quick questions or comments, first of all, February twenty-seventh I will be in Miami, so I will not be available for any kind of meeting. I had, and also July tenth, I'm probably planning on vacation, so I don't know what other people's vacation plans are, but I know in July we often have backups or, or lack of quorum, so, so I'll just put those two out there. I noticed there's a concrete pad that's been built out on Poplar Street, can you tell us what that is for?
Bridget, do you know more about it than me? We're gonna discuss it tomorrow, I just saw a picture of it today, and there's a meeting to discuss it tomorrow, and I will find out.
Great, I appreciate that.
Yes.
And then the construction work east of Highway One near Marada, what is that?
I believe it's the inner type pipeline for the SAM plant.
It's not a trail, it's just a pipe.
No, no.
I just noticed, I just noticed that they put a sign out close to nursery mines that explains, like it says it's the SAM, the SAM project, I didn't know either, so.
I saw the picture of the, in the paper.
Okay.
Of the, the pipes that they're working on, and they talk about the trails, I was just, for the county, and I was a little confused.
I saw a little sign go up, so.
There is something about wouldn't it be great to put the trail in when you're done putting the pipe in the grid, yeah.
Common complaint, so it goes, okay, and then finally, just one other thing, could you have somebody from the maintenance team to look at the bike pump on Poplar that's perpetually broken, I know there's a bike pump that's been put there on...
It's at the bike station?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's a beautiful idea, but some person, some people seem to break it, so, anyway, that's it, any other comments for Jill?
Just questions, you mentioned a couple ordinances like the cannabis ordinance and the adjacent units, that have any applicability to the planning commission or is it purely in the, to the council?
So, the cannabis ordinance is for a licensing process, and it won't be part of the zoning code or the LCP. That said, you may be processing coastal development permits at some point for proposed commercial cannabis businesses, and we would definitely have a study session with you in advance so that you, you can see what the licensing part of the process is in sort of parallel with the coastal development permit review, we're trying to, this ordinance is being crafted in an attempt to keep that sequenced appropriately, so it, it doesn't elongate it and there isn't overlap. Now, I think you asked about accessory dwelling units, that will come through you, that is in the zoning ordinance, and it's, right now it's called your second unit ordinance, and I can't remember which section it is, it was updated about twenty sixteen to, it revised a number of things including the, the review process, we are having an administrative review, we do not conduct a public hearing for them, although we are still noticing them, which was based on coastal commission intention for how our, our code be processed, that we still process a coastal development permit. It will be interesting when we talk to you in the study session about the intent of state law for ADUs and how they'd be treated, and the coastal commission's guidance, and our, our attempt to kind of pull those together for what's appropriate and what we think would be appropriate in Half Moon Bay, with your feedback, but you will, you will see all of that, yeah.
Alright, excellent, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Great update, so I'd like to propose planning, director's report, and are there any planning commi, commission communications?
None.
Hearing none, I am going to close that, and then I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]